KTOP, we're ready. Please start. Welcome and thank you for joining us today, September 21st, 2024. I'm Monique Berlanga, a volunteer and member of the League of Women Voters of Oakland. We are pleased to have as partners today AAUW Oakland Piedmont Branch, Alameda County Bar Association, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Asian Immigrant Women Advocates, Center for Elder Independence, Centro Legado de la Raza, East Bay Housing Organizations, National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Oakland Violence Prevention Coalition, Piedmont Pines Neighborhood Association, and SPUR. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in issue advocacy and voter education. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues or ballot measures. This forum is presented by the education arm of the League, which does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties, nor take positions on issues or ballot measures. Before we introduce the candidates, I have a few logistical items to review. The candidates and our community partners have all agreed to participate under the guidelines set for this forum. The candidate forums today are being televised by KTOP, Oakland's cable access station, and livestreamed on the city's website, The forums are being recorded and can be viewed later on the League of Women Voters of Oakland's website or YouTube channel. The recording of this event is owned by the League of Women Voters of Oakland. Filming or recording these sessions by anyone other than KTOP is not permitted. We are hosting in-person candidate forums for 13 Oakland races over two Saturdays, today and on October 5th. We are presenting eight sessions today and the remaining five on Saturday, October 5th, here in City Hall. The full schedule can be found on a poster outside the door or on our website, lvwOakland.org/decide. This session is for the position of Oakland City Council Member for District 7. There are four candidates running for this position. They are Marika Goolsbee, Marcy Hodge, Kenneth Houston, and Iris Mariens. Kenneth Houston informed us this morning that he is unable to attend this forum. I will shortly read a prepared statement from him. The candidates participating today met the criteria for participation according to our protocols and ground rules, which you can find on the table outside for reference. Process: So here is our process for this forum. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for opening remarks. The speaking order has been randomly assigned. Candidates will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question. If there is a lightning round, those answers will be limited to yes or no answers. Please keep an eye on the timekeeper, who will signal candidates with different color signs marked 30 seconds remaining and stop. As moderator, I may verbally give these prompts as well. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, the candidates may choose to use some or all of their one and a half minutes to rebut the response given by another candidate. Following the questions, each candidate shall have one minute for a closing statement in reverse order from opening statements. We will be handling questions for the candidates in the following manner. Questions for this forum have been prepared in advance by the League of Women Voters and/or our partners. We will also take live questions from you, the audience. If you would like to ask a question, raise your hand and one of our volunteers will give you an index card to write the question on. Please keep your questions succinct and directed to all the candidates, not individual candidates. We will try and include as many of your questions as time allows. At this point, I would like to read the prepared statement from Kenneth Houston. Dear friends and supporters, I sincerely apologize that I could not be with you today and want to express my deep gratitude for your unwavering support. As many of you know, my decision to run in the District 7 City Council race came under very short notice. I had prior family commitments that were planned before I endeavored on this rapid-paced commitment. I want you to know how much I appreciate your understanding and support. It means the world to me. Be assured that even when I'm not physically present, my dedication and commitment to our community and this campaign is unwavering. Together, we will make a difference. I am here for each of you and am deeply grateful for your trust and belief you have placed in me. Let's continue working hand in hand to create the positive change our community deserves. With sincere appreciation and warm regards, Ken Houston, the son of Oakland. Before we begin, candidates, in order to be heard on KTOP's broadcast, you will need to turn on your mic by pushing the "on" button in front of you and speaking directly into your microphone. When you are done speaking, please be sure to return your mic to the off position. One moment. Now, let's begin with our first candidate, Iris Mariens. So Iris, you'll now have one and a half minutes to give an opening statement.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. And again, my name is Iris Mariens and I'm running for Oakland City Council, District 7. The combination of talent, education, and life experience I possess make me an excellent and uniquely qualified candidate to lead the district. I bring over 25 years of experience as Chief of Staff to council members of the Oakland City Council, where I've been at the forefront of policymaking and community advocacy. This role has given me a comprehensive understanding of the legislative process, political landscape, and the importance of effective governance. My extensive tenure in local government has allowed me to develop and maintain long-term beneficial and productive local and regional relationships that allow continued access to leverage multiple partnerships needed and necessary to see the district through the opportunities for positive change over the next decade. The combination of experience, combined with my extensive background in public service uniquely position me to advocate for our communities. And I thank you for this opportunity today.
Thank you. Marcy, you have one and a half minutes.
Yes, thank you so much for the invitation and the open door. As a lifelong resident of District 7 and the city of Oakland, I have seen firsthand the issues that our community faces, and they have grown worse. Oakland is in a decline, most especially in District 7. Our residents are concerned about education, safe streets, you know, the quality of life, noise pollution, and we deserve better. We need strong leadership. It is said that you learn the most about a leader in times of difficulty, and the next four years will test us all. I'm ready to make tough decisions. I'm known for being trustworthy, courageous, and hardworking. These are qualities that make for a strong, focused councilperson who listens to constituents and makes decisions, most importantly, for the best of our city and residents. Quite frankly, District 7 needs this. We face significant challenges improving the unemployment rates. Seeing our small businesses close, we need to invest in small businesses. The tax burdens that are placed on residents. We want to ensure that we have safe neighborhoods. And that is why I'm running for City Council. Again, my name is Marcy Hodge, your Oakland City Council candidate for District 7. Thank you.
Thank you. Marika, one and a half minutes.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Marika Goolsbee, and I just want to give you a little information about myself. I was, I am a Bay Area native. I was born and raised in San Francisco. I've lived it all over the East Bay most of my adult life. I've lived in District 7 on and off since the age of 19. I've seen District 7 have ups and downs. And recently, we've been going downhill. For the past 10 years, I have been a member of ACE, fighting for renters' rights and housing. I am also a member of CBE, which fights against polluters in our district. For me, running for City Council is just the next step and many steps that I have taken to fight for District 7. Growing up, I always heard, go to school, get a degree, get a good job, and move out of the ghetto. Someone needs to stay and fight to make it better. And that is what I am doing. Electing me, you will elect someone who loves the district, has heart, and is hardworking. Remember, Marika Goolsbee for District 7.
Thank you. Now it's time for the candidates to answer questions. Okay, we will start with Marika Goolsbee. And here is your question. If you are elected, what will be your top priorities? And the second part of that question is, what specific experience do you have working collaboratively to produce outcomes for constituents or a community to make a change in those priorities?
Thank you for that question. If elected, my top priorities will be affordable housing and employment. Those two things alone make a difference in whether a community is thriving or not. I have worked, like I said, with ACE on housing issues for the past 10 years and made a difference in many people's lives that were struggling to maintain their housing and basically just get along with their landlord. I also serve on the Oakland Rent Board, which is more of the same, negotiating between renters and landlords and helping people maintain their housing. So I have 10 years of experience in this area, and I think we really need to get District 7 stable. We need to get people housed. We need to get people working to bring down poverty crimes and just sheer desperation on all sides. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Iris, same question. I'll read it again. If you are elected, what will be your top priorities? And what specific experience do you have working collaboratively to produce outcomes for constituents or a community to help effect change in those priorities?
Thank you for the question. My top priorities would be public safety, combating violent and property crimes through strong community policing model, ensuring that East Oakland gets its fair share of resources. Housing and homelessness and public safety and public health. Expanding affordable housing and addressing homelessness by connecting mental health and public safety efforts. Good jobs and economic growth. Uplifting East Oakland's economy by bringing back businesses that we created when I was 23 years in the office of Councilmember Reed, Senior, and we brought a lot of the businesses there when we worked collectively with community. We worked collectively with community to write the first sideshow ordinance. So we've created policy that has benefited the community, and we've worked collectively with community to bring you youth uprising, a 25,000-square-foot facility for youth and young adults that are impacted by trauma with a full-service health center so people can meet their needs, their health needs, right in community. So we, so again, working with community. There's not a week that goes by that I don't receive a call from a District 7 resident, although I am working in another council district. So yes, absolutely have worked with community for multiple years. And there's not a project that would move forward without the community's voice in it. So every project that went up in District 7 was vetted through community previously. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marcy, same question. If you are elected, what will be your top priorities? And what specific experience do you have working collaboratively to produce outcomes for constituents or a community?
Thank you. My top priorities would focus on blight and homelessness, illegal dumping, public safety, and affordable housing. In terms of blight, homelessness, and illegal dumping, we have to focus on enforcement. We have to ensure that we're getting out there, cleaning our streets, and providing a housing-first policy so that we can move the homeless into shelter programs or housing. We need to also ensure that we're working and partnering with other organizations that can help to absorb, as we move homeless off of the streets and into housing, we need to increase and expand our partnerships with, whether it's residential programs or agencies that provide support as needed. In terms of public safety, while we do need police reform, Oakland has been moving towards that. We have to expand the number of police officers that we have. Training is going to be important. Also incorporating partnerships with our churches. Our churches are right in the midst of the communities that know who the young people are and who are the actors who maybe need a job. And so we need to incorporate those kind of partnerships. In terms of affordable housing, there's a great model in Atlanta that have just opened up micro-community housing. We need to look at that in terms of creating a quick turnaround for building housing and also incorporating placement for those who are in need.
Thank you. And Marcy, we'll start the next question with you. How would you approach bringing new tax revenue to the city?
New tax revenue should not be based off of taxing the citizenship, the citizens. It's been something as a prior Oakland Budget Committee member, I think that was about 2012 to 2014. I had a real problem with looking at taxing residents first. We need to have a business mind in terms of growing businesses and inviting and having an environment in which businesses thrive here in the city of Oakland. That should be our main base of income. Also ensuring that we're looking at redevelopment funds so that we can bring back those redevelopment funds that were once here, that helped to build 10,000 residents when Jerry Brown was here and we saw the landscape of Jack London Square change. If we have those kind of models and that kind of push, we can definitely see Oakland thrive. I would also like to see the corridor along the MacArthur, the Hagenberger Corridor advance. We need to look at the airport in terms of expansion so that we can bring back businesses and the foot traffic. Businesses don't come if there's no foot traffic, and we need to look at that in terms of expanding and also creating a corridor in which we can have hotels. Hopefully, another sports team, possibly the WNBA with the African-American group that have purchased the Coliseum. But there are many ways, but the primary way is to look at increasing businesses and growth and helping them to thrive.
Thank you. Marika, same question. How would you approach bringing new tax revenue to the city?
Thank you for that question. I do agree that we need to bring more businesses into Oakland to increase tax revenue. I, and I do also believe that this is a part of getting District 7 stable. From hours and hours of door knocking, what I hear from people is that businesses are not coming to Oakland because of safety. And like I said, getting District 7 safe is also connected to housing and employment. This is what will get District 7 safe and stable and bring businesses back when they see we are safer and much stable. So I think, like I said, my number two, my number one and two priorities are the way to get us to where we want to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Iris, same question. How would you approach bringing new tax revenue to the city?
Thank you for that question, and that's something that I've done in the past and led projects in District 7 to bring you all the dealerships that are along Oakport and East Oakland. They bring in some of the largest tax increments into the city, not just East Oakland. We brought you Walmart, In-N-Out Burger, Starbucks. Creating new business also is tied into public safety. When you're looking at economic development, it has threat, public safety has to be threaded through to attract businesses to invest in your city. So it's not simply, you know, increasing tax revenue. It's actually having a plan, a public safety plan, to attract businesses to the city so that they would come and invest their dollars in Oakland, understanding that the city will protect their businesses and so that the ecosystem works very well. In addition to that, our revenue division brings in about 30% to 40% of the general fund. Special projects is what we normally did in our revenue division to even close gaps in the budget. So we would go back to formally bringing those special projects back, bringing someone from outside to really analyze all of our funds and make sure that they're working. Real estate transfer taxes is something that the city usually uses. We overshot that in the CAFRA, if you see it online, and that's something that we need to make sure that we're not using one-time funds for ongoing expenses with expenditures with the city. So thank you for that question.
Thank you. And Iris, this question is going to start with you. What are some of your strategies and philosophies to ensure that with a new change in ownership at the Coliseum, Oakland residents are heard and equity is a priority?
So with it being an African-American sports and entertainment group, I think that we're starting out with, even when we did the exclusive negotiating agreement with this group, many groups were looking at that land as a possibility of exclusive negotiating. The city chose Oakland African-American Sports and Entertainment Group. They have been all over Oakland, meeting with residents to hear their voice. One of the, one of the things that you have to do in Oakland is work with the residents. You can't move a project forward without speaking and hearing the voice of residents that will either be impacted or participate in a project. So I believe that it's a wonderful opportunity for Oakland and for that entire Hagenberger Corridor during the redistricting process. I was in those meetings along with other East Oakland residents because we worked on the Coliseum plan for 12 years. And so we're definitely happy to move forward and work with the Oakland African-American Sports and Entertainment Group. I think they have some bright minds in there. Our former city administrator, Robert Bob, is part of that project. He did amazing work in DC where he built a ballpark and all of the retail and the other things around it completely transformed that community. So I'm very confident that this will be a good project for Oakland, and it will change the landscape of our Hagenberger Corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcy, same question. What are some of your strategies and philosophies to ensure that with a new change in ownership at the Coliseum, Oakland residents are heard and equity is a priority?
It's going to be a process of, for a continuation of forums so that people have an opportunity so that as the process of that Coliseum is being redeveloped, that we're getting a... Okay, thank you. It's going to be a process of making sure that the community is heard throughout the process of that redevelopment of the Coliseum. I certainly trust those who have purchased the Coliseum group. There are many that I am quite familiar with, and I believe that they have a heart for the community and they want to see the community thrive. We also have to take into consideration that the city of Oakland does have a general plan and a master plan with a wonderful strategic forecast for District 7 and across, of course, the city. We also have the local small-business enterprise policies that we need to ensure that we're looking at as those plans are being executed. The policy ensures that we're mandating 50% of work for large construction and also 15% of apprenticeship. We also want to make sure that we're partnering with Peralta Community Colleges. I was a trustee for the Peralta Community Colleges, representing District 2 for two terms. We have a great workforce preparedness program there, and we need to make sure that we're engaging the community so that young people can come out of those programs and have something to participate in in terms of the development of those areas. So making sure that we're looking at data analysis, that we're meeting goals and objectives as we move that project along and that corridor.
Thank you. And Marika, same question. What are some of your strategies and philosophies to ensure that with a new change in ownership at the Coliseum, Oakland residents are heard and equity is a priority?
Thank you for the question. So my philosophy around being sure that constituents are heard is that it's important that any and all work done for the community has community input and their desires are made number one. And my strategies would be to always invite community to the table. So ongoing, regular meetings, surveys for those who can't come in person, but we need to put the desire of the constituents first. Too many times, we have people coming to fix things and don't even consult with the community at all. And then the community is felt as if things are happening to them and not with them, for them. So that is my philosophy and my strategy would be to always have regular, ongoing meetings that community can come to as well as surveys, written responses for those who can't come in person. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marika, we'll start this next question with you. Pedestrian safety has been a significant issue. How do you propose managing pedestrian and bicycle safety with the competing demands of drivers arguing against road diets?
Thank you for that question. I've never heard the term "road diet", but that's, that's interesting. I think pedestrian safety is very, very important. Too many people in the district are angry at what's going on in our district and how it's kind of been allowed to fall apart. And people are just rushing through life. We need to slow way down. I have noticed on the streets that, I believe people are slowing down just because there's more, more awareness, more awareness of what's going on. And I think that's important to raise awareness of, of all these tragedies that have, that have happened recently. I also wonder if we need to look at the way the streets are built. Just, just the city planning needs to be looked at again. And I think this will also help. So, thank you.
Thank you. Iris, this question, same question. Pedestrian safety is a significant issue. How do you propose managing pedestrian and bicycle safety with the competing demands of drivers arguing against road diets?
Thank you for the question. The city of Oakland has a Department of Transportation, but again, we have seven distinct districts which are different. In our communities in East Oakland, even in the flatlands, you have differences from the flatlands to the hills. For example, along 98th Avenue, there was a road diet. And the road diet, the way that the Department of Transportation works is that they focus on schools. However, we have charter schools, we have OUSD schools, we have parents competing with folks trying to get out to get to work on a two-lane street between two freeways. So it's important that city staff drill down and understand who lives in these communities. These communities are mainly African-American and Latino. And they drive trucks, they don't ride bikes to work. They're between two freeways and they're cul-de-sacs. So they're all fighting to get in and out of a space to a two-lane, moving to two freeways. So I think part of what we are looking at is cultural competency within our departments, drilling down and understanding who lives in your community because we don't always need slow streets when there's only, when people are coming out of cul-de-sacs. And then there are other areas that actually do need to slow down, but you really need to work with community. Again, you cannot move areas of community without community input. And I think it's so important to make sure that we include community in any dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marcy, same question. Pedestrian safety is a significant issue. How do you propose managing pedestrian and bicycle safety with the competing demands of drivers arguing against road diets?
It's going to be important to make sure that we incorporate... I keep forgetting, sorry. It's going to be important that we engage all voices so that we're heard. I have, not only am I a former trustee for Peralta Community College, but also a business owner for the last 16 years in the city of Oakland, East Oakland. The corridor of International Boulevard was decimated according to, you know, residents and business owners because it turned into, from a two-lane to a one-lane, which is quite disastrous in a community with that number of people. And so we need the voices. We came down to City Hall, we talked about the restructuring of that corridor. Our voices were overlooked. And so as a councilperson, I will definitely hear all voices and to ensure that we're looking at public safety, that we're looking at road repairs, repaving projects, prioritizing areas that have been neglected. We want pedestrians and cyclists to feel comfortable with riding their bikes along those corridors. But we have to make sure that we have crosswalks for our kids that are going back and forth to school, lighting, protected bike lanes, all of that is important, and parking. We come down to the city, to downtown, to the, to City Hall, and we can't get a parking space. The garage has been in disarray for almost 10 years now. So we need to hear from the public, and the public has, has to have accessibility to be able to come down here to the City Hall to express our voices. And so that's also a problem that we have and one that I would listen.
Thank you. So this next question is going to be the last one so that we can end on time. And it's going to be a two-part question. We rely on boards and commissions for oversight, yet they have many vacancies. What do you see as the cause for this and what solutions would you propose? What do you see as the cause for this and what solutions would you propose? Is the first part. The second, in general, what would you do to promote trust and faith in public officials and in the power of city government to deliver services and improve quality of life? And so we are going to start that question with you, Marcy.
As a lifelong resident in the city, I know that is absolute... Once again, that mic. I know as a resident here in the City of Oakland, born and raised, attended all the schools here in the Bay Area, it's important to engage the community. When I'm running for office, and I may go to churches or to different organizations, I don't just show up just when it's election time. I show up when there's a revival, a summer revival at a church, just to make sure I'm staying connected to the community. And so it's going to be important as a councilperson to make sure that people see me, not just when it's time to get elected, but to also see me during those important anniversaries or those celebrations when agencies have been here for 10 years and are celebrating their time here in the City of Oakland. Also, the City of Oakland, city councilpersons generally receive a budget. So in that, we need to make sure that we are encouraging individuals to participate in boards, to make sure that they understand that your participation means that that's many times connected to the allocation of funds, working with different organizations. I am a part of several different organizations here in the City of Oakland, and encouraging young people. Oftentimes, we dismiss young people and their voices. We want to make sure that we're not only reaching to our seniors, but also to young folks, that your voice needs to be heard. And I would like to see you on a committee so that you're heard and that you can also represent those in the city.
Thank you. And Marika, same two-part question. We rely on boards and commissions for oversight, yet they have many vacancies. What do you see as the cause for this and what solutions would you propose? And second, what would you do to promote trust and faith in public officials and in the power of city government to deliver services and improve quality of life?
Thank you for the question. I think community involvement is very, very important. I think community is less involved when they cannot see the connection between commissions and boards in their lives. I think making those connections visible to the community, to say like, this thing happened because this board or this commission did this thing, raises trust in the community and makes them want to be active and makes them want to be involved. Too many people, when I ask them, you know, I've been door knocking a lot. And when I ask them, how do you feel about your city council representation? Oh, I don't know. Oh, I don't know what they do. You know, and I think we need to make that more visible and clear to community what they are getting out of it so they'll want to be involved, so they'll want to ask questions. Because in this day and age, when people have 1,000 things to do just to survive, just to pay the bills, and they don't see the benefit, they don't want to add another thing onto their plate. So I think that's, that is something I would definitely participate in.
Thank you. And Iris, we rely on boards and commissions for oversight, yet they have many vacancies. What do you see as the cause for this and what solutions would you propose? And second, what would you do to promote trust and faith in public officials and in the power of city government to deliver services and improve quality of life?
Thank you for the question. Right now, we have several boards and commissions, and a lot of those appointments come through the mayor's office. I think one of the things that our boards and commissions should reflect would be our community. And perhaps the appointments should come from councilmembers or from a separate body, not just from one office. That's been one of the issues. Also, the ability to participate. If you're participating in a meeting, you can't participate and ask questions if you're on Zoom. You actually physically have to be here. So the participation level is extremely light. That's another reason why you don't have participation on boards and commissions that you would have. In addition to that, we should advertise these vacancies, not just on a city website. Who's going to go look at that? It should be across all media platforms. It should be in the paper, in all types of papers, that will be in black churches and other places around Oakland. So I think that just getting the word that these boards and commissions exist is very important. The Planning Commission seems to be that commission that, you know, a lot of people pay attention to because they have projects moving forward. But again, these commissions should not have people that sit on these commissions for three and four years. I think some commissions have people that have been there, you know, for six years. That's unacceptable. So thank you for that question.
Thank you. Now the candidates will make closing statements. We will reverse the order that we began with. And as a reminder, each candidate will be given one minute for their closing statement. Marika, we will start with you.
Thank you. My name is Marika Goolsbee. I have been in Oakland all my adult life. I have heart and skin in the game, and I'm ready to connect with community and truly represent District Seven. And hopefully I have earned your vote.
Thank you. Marcy, you now have one minute for your closing statement.
Thank you. My name is Marcy Hodge, again, candidate for District Seven. My vision for Oakland is straightforward. Foster an environment where small businesses can thrive, which will create more jobs and grow our economy. We must manage taxpayer dollars wisely, invest in workforce preparedness, ensure safe schools and neighborhoods where our families can prosper and thrive. As your councilperson, I will prioritize cleaning up light and addressing the homelessness crisis by pushing more comprehensive solutions that provide housing and support services. That's why I'm running for city council. The challenges we face are substantial. Creating safer community by reducing crime and expanding the police force, addressing unemployment, supporting small businesses, easing the tax burden on residents, ensuring public safety, and delivering quality education for our children. I am prepared to make those decisions. I am prepared to be your city councilperson for District Seven. Again, my name is Marcy Hodge. Thank you.
Thank you. And Iris, one minute, please.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to share bits of my vision and plans today. And as we wrap up, I want to emphasize that I, that my deep commitment to the City of Oakland and its residents and my proven track record with over 25 years of experience. I also want to say that I have been endorsed by the California Democratic Party. I've been endorsed by SEIU. I've been endorsed by IFPTE21. I've been endorsed by the firefighters. And I've been endorsed, most importantly, by District Seven residents who asked me to run for the seat. So again, I thank you for your time today. And that's my wrap.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Oakland and our community partners, I want to thank the candidates for their participation today. We also want to thank the audience for coming to meet the candidates and proposing thoughtful questions. This forum will be rebroadcast on KTOP, Oakland's Government Access Cable Station, on Channel 10, on Xfinity Comcast, or Channel 99 on AT&amp;T U-verse. The recordings will be posted on the League of Women Voters of Oakland's website, lvvoakland.org backslash decide, and our YouTube channel. For further information about upcoming forums, the candidates, and ballot measures, please visit the League's website. We encourage voters to visit vote411.org, our award-winning personalized voter resource. You can see what will be on your specific ballot and find expanded information about candidates and ballot measures. Members of the League of Women Voters do the hands-on work to defend democracy and empower voters. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping important issues to keep our community strong. If you would like to be involved with the men and women helping make democracy work for everyone, it's easy to join the League. Again, we encourage you to visit our website at lvvoakland.org. Follow us on Facebook, on Instagram, Twitter, and our YouTube channel. Look for our voter education materials such as easy voter guides, pros and cons, and more, which are distributed in print and online, in some in multiple languages. Election Day is November 5. If you have moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you need to reregister. Online voter registration is available at the Secretary of State's website, sos.ca.gov. It's secure and easy. The deadline to register to vote is October 21, 2024. In Alameda County, every voter will be mailed a ballot. You can vote early at one of the 24 vote centers around Oakland or vote by mail by filling out your ballot and making sure you have a sign on the outside of the envelope. Return it via US mail, no postage required, or you can drop it off at one of many Dropbox locations around Oakland. Please encourage your family, friends, and neighbors to vote. In Alameda County, if you miss the October 21 deadline, you may register conditionally and vote provisionally in person at the registrar of voters' office or at one of the many vote centers throughout the county. Find out more at acvote.alamedacountyca.gov. This concludes our forum. Thank you.